All right, guys, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. I want to welcome you all to the regularly scheduled council meeting for the governing body of Spring Hill, Kansas on Thursday, June twenty six, twenty twenty five. If you guys could stand with me if you're able, we have Pastor Zach Terrell from Become Church here that's gonna do the invocation.
Different groups are part of this community, businesses and families that make up the area where we live, but we pray that you give wisdom as this council makes decisions that govern our lives and the decisions that they make, how they impact the different groups and people and all of the different areas of our community that we pray that your blessing and your favor to be here, that you give wisdom, should help us as we balance budgets and make decisions about areas and just all the different things, but we pray a blessing on this group for serving our community and our free wisdom as they make wise choices. But we pray that you be lifted up, you have your way here in Spring Hill as it is.
Amen. Thank you. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy Madam Clerk, if you could please take the roll.
Mr. Thron.
Here.
Ms. Feback?
Here.
Mr. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Grant?
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. We did have a request to remove discussion item number thirteen, that's the revenue neutral rate, and then also to add two executive sessions, number one, not elected personnel exception, and number two, attorney-client exception. And remove item number ten. Other than that, are there any other requested changes? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll move on to citizen participation. This is a time when the public can come and speak about whatever they would like to talk about. Um, we do have a list, and the first person on the list is Mr. Beer, Bill Peerman.
That's right.
Let me go pass it up?
Yeah, pass it around. Sure. That and I'll let you see these because you're the one that gets stuck. Well, that area, that development woodland crosses up this high again. And my, well, evening, Bill Peterman, nineteen four thirty-one, West Two Hundred Street. Last meeting, I came up and talked about five things that were bothering me, and I love this system where I ask you guys questions and never hear shit. We need to go back to the old way. I've been going to coming to these meetings for eleven and a half years. The only person that I see that's been here as long as I have, well, she's not even here anymore, was Glenda. Glenda was is the only one that's been here as long as I have. And the system since you've taken office has went downhill. This, uh, don't answer because then you'll act like you know what's going on. Yeah, if I don't answer the questions that the public has, then I can say, well, I didn't know that. Because that's what you guys have been doing. The guy, the subdivision that is next to Brookwood Farms has got weeds this high, this is two weeks later. The weeds are up, you know about that now, and then I showed you the picture and you guys are seeing the picture. That's, that's their sewer systems that were the water runoff. Uh, and sorry, I get upset about this because it's just bad. It's, 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 we're neglecting it. You know, if I don't have to do anything, God, I got a great job. But we need to do something now. Uh, my understanding is the reason that the, the subdivisions, uh, not putting a swimming pool in, the guy up front that's selling or doing the rentals, I heard he went bankrupt. Now, it's just hearsay, but maybe most of my hearsay is pretty well. Well, people don't want that crap. And you guys forced that crap down my throat when we said, we don't want to see Reynolds over there. You know, it's kind of like, uh, it, it's, it's hard to believe, but it's not what we say about, it's, uh, let's go to the other things and I'll just leave that. You guys know what I'm talking about, about that subdivision. They put down that in the middle of the stream, they're changing horses, and all of a sudden, we don't want to put a swimming pool in. That way they can come over and use our swimming pool, and we just got a four hundred dollar a year up on our dues so that we could fix our swimming pool. So that's, that's not a good thing. They'll just be coming over and using it. Maybe I can come over and use you. You guys don't have swimming pools though, do you? Yeah, that'll be kind of bad. But the other thing is, is, uh, I brought up about people talking about, I'm, I'm running for this next, uh, next office. Uh, they were campaigning in here for the, for the next election. Uh, you can't do that, I thought, but I went and checked with Topeka and the election committee, and that basically falls back on, uh, the bylaws of the city. So you got away with one there. So the other thing is, is, uh, I'm kind of upset that we brought in a, uh, trying to think of your title.
City Administrator.
City, city administrator that we give extra money to, and in the four years that he's been here, when he says, uh, what do you, you know, what do you got, what do you, when you guys go through and talk, give your little talk about your, your, uh, what you've done this last two weeks, your month, or whatever. No, no, uh, he always says, no, he doesn't have anything. Why? Isn't he doing anything for all that extra money? You guys, when, when you're supposed to speak up and say, hey, I've, uh, did this this two weeks, I've worked on this this two weeks. We like to hear that. The way it's set up right now, we don't get to ask, ask any questions during the meeting. So usually, most of that stuff goes by the wayside, and it's not, we don't get heard. We don't get heard. Some of, some of us have some good ideas. A lot of the people besides me probably have great ideas. But you guys need to listen. Back when Steve was the mayor, he'd find out a way to communicate with you. If he couldn't do it during the meeting, he'd at least call you. I didn't get no calls this week. None of you guys called me. You didn't call me. You don't care. You didn't call me. And I taught, said, told him that he didn't have, he didn't say anything. Who's the parliamentary, parliamentary person around here that keeps track of what the rules are? Isn't that the lawyer? So what's he doing? Hell, I'll come in and sit in his spot. You guys pay me what he's paying, getting paid. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll go ahead and close citizen participation at this time, move on to the consent agenda. These are items that the staff considers to be routine maintenance, but I'll open the floor to any questions if you guys have any. If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Uh, so moved. Second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll move on to formal council action. The first item on the agenda is consider approval of agreement with Water One for the Water Main Relocations for one hundred ninety-ninth Street Improvements Ridge View to Renner Project, and Mrs. Abel, you have the floor.
Hey, the next item before you is a request to approve an agreement with Water One. With the improvements to one hundred ninety-ninth Street from Ridge View to Renner, uh, there will need to be some utility relocations. The way that those work on, uh, the various projects that we work on, if they're, if those utilities are located in city right-of-way, then those utilities are responsible for moving their own utility at their expense. If there is a dedicated utility easement that they have and are in, included in, then the city is responsible for reimbursing them for the cost to move their utility if we need them to move that, move for a roadway improvement or such. Um, so we've been working directly with the various utilities, um, and I'll be before you, uh, here probably in the next couple of months for Atmos. Um, Atmos is another utility that, uh, will need to relocate. Uh, they are located in a, a utility easement as well. But for tonight, uh, Water One has estimated, based on their in-house contractors, uh, how much it would cost for them to relocate the water line necessary for the one hundred ninety-ninth Street improvements. A portion of that is going to be Water One's expense. Those are the areas within the right-of-way, and then the other areas in the utility easement would be the city's responsibility. This is included in the one hundred ninety-ninth Street budget that Rhonda put together, so this was something that we were aware of and had planned for. Um, so the agreement, um, has been reviewed by our attorney as well as Water One's attorney. Uh, and we're just looking for you to authorize the mayor to, uh, sign that agreement so that we can move forward with this. Like I said, we, we're currently working on the acquisition of the right-of-ways, the right-of-way and the easements. Um, to date, we have about half of the easements that we need. Uh, we're continuing to work on the rest of those, so I'll have the first round of easements to you by the next meeting so that we can go ahead and get the first round signed and, uh, recorded. So with that, I'm available if you have any questions.
That was a question I was gonna wrap into this too. I know I watched the school board meeting and they were talking a lot about the easement sidewalk situation. Is this part of, like, are we gonna have to go through water again? That's if we take some of that easement from the school district, or is this all encompassing? Everything waters here.
So the water is primarily on the south side of the road.
Okay.
So it's not part of.
So it's not part of that anyway? Okay.
It's not part of that anyway, but you bring up a really good point. We had a meeting right before our, uh, work session with the school district to discuss the needs along the school district's right-of-way.
Okay.
So we've got a plan moving forward to, um, to work with the school district on that as well. And what we need from the school district is temporary construction easements so that we can do some of the grading that is necessary. We're not going to be putting any utilities on their property. We're not acquiring any additional right-of-way. Don't believe there's any drainage easements associated with their property. It's just temporary construction easement.
Okay, cool.
And there will be a ten-foot concrete trail that will be located along the school's front edge.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought, but I didn't know if this had anything to do with part of that too, because that seemed pretty.
Same project, totally different side of the road.
Just different side of the road, okay.
Different side of the road.
It's weird. I would think it would be on the other side, but I guess when they put it in, it's probably just on this. Does it go underneath then to get over to the other?
Probably, yeah, it does cross the road. Uh, it's interesting, we had to work directly with, um, Water One and Atmos. Uh, we had a meeting with both utilities at the same time to make sure that the children would play well in the sandbox.
Yeah.
Uh, because they are going to be co-located nearby each other in the same utility easement. Yeah, making sure that we got them to agree upon, uh, the spacing that they need between their utilities, both vertically and horizontally.
Okay, and this will be paid out of the bond, so that makes sense. I was curious, um, the president that you talked about for who's responsible for what? What's that established by? Is there a state law, or is it ordinance, or is it just common practice, or how, how does that go?
That is a really good question. I've been doing it as common practice on the Missouri side versus the state side, but I believe that it is state statute. I think that it's just the way that the easements are written as well, so. I think it's all of the above.
That's how it was explained to me was, because I think we had that, like, just our housing building. There were some issues with right-of-way and utility easement. And utilities sometimes mess up and get outside of their easement.
Or it gets marked wrong and you get the wrong spot.
No, we had one that they had to relocate because when we were building the pool, they had to, they were inside our area outside of the utility easement, so at first they were trying to say we had to pay for it because we broke.
Oh, no, if they're outside the utilities.
It was like literally six inches out, you know.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, it was interesting because I, I learned a lot about that during that whole process.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve the Water Main Relocation Agreement with Water One in the estimated amount of eighty-one thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Uh, we had a request to remove item number ten, so we'll move on to eleven, consider approval of purchase of replacement police vehicle administration, and Mr. Khan, you have the floor, Captain Khan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I was actually gonna start off by, I'd been asked about a missing autistic kid that we were looking for. Wanted to let you guys know that we located him and are currently reuniting him with his parents, so, um, if anybody was worried about that, that has been resolved.
Thank you, Captain.
Now, uh, we're gonna start by talking about the police administrative vehicle. We have leases for our administrative cars through Enterprise. We have one lease that's expiring in July. We seek to replace that car with a slightly different car. Traditionally, we've been using admin vehicles that are civilian vehicles. Uh, we're suggesting replacing this one with a hybrid police pursuit vehicle. The reason being is that there are times with a small fleet and a small department where we might have vehicle maintenance issues, cars that are down. Being able to replace this with a vehicle that's made for police work allows us to say, uh, take me out of that car and put a police officer in it that needs to use it for its intended purpose if need be. Uh, with that, the cost for the vehicle itself is roughly the same. Uh, the cost for upfitting is about five thousand dollars more, but that would have the same type of lights would be in a normal police car to allow it to perform the same functions. All it would need is striping and a computer. Uh, with that, uh, we are going to recommend that the staff approve purchase of that vehicle through, uh, lease format, essentially replacing the, uh, lease for the vehicle that is having the lease end. The purchase price of the vehicle is forty-seven thousand, seventy-three dollars. Upfitting costs with lights, sirens, and all the other equipment is eleven thousand, ninety-six dollars for a total cost of fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars, uh, which would be leased out. Are there any questions on that vehicle?
So the five thousand dollar difference, is that the difference in the upfitting, is that the, is that within the eleven thousand?
Yes.
So typically, it's about six for that vehicle. So I think that's well worth it to make it a full-fledged vehicle.
Yeah, and, and.
Yeah.
Striping it is about three hundred dollars.
So I feel like it's kind of a waste to not have them all be ready to go.
And this vehicle be outfitted for prisoner transport, things like that? Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think it's well worth the money to make it be a more usable vehicle instead of just only useful on purpose, so, yeah.
Yep.
Well worth it.
What's your lead time to get it?
So, uh, if, if you approve it, once everything's signed, we can probably pick it up in a week. Uh, at that point, it's about four weeks out for upfitting.
All the bells and whistles, yeah.
Yep, about four weeks.
Way better than it was a couple of years.
So one of, one of the reasons that we're really liking to move on this now is that, uh, these cars were actually, they were bought on a contract or ordered on a contract, uh, and the department that ordered them didn't pick them up. It really just kind of fell into our hands with that because we are on usually about a one-year time.
That's what I thought it was about a year.
That's way faster.
It, it can be rough.
Yeah, pretty good cost, and, and if you're getting it in and ready to go in a month or so, that's, that's amazing.
I say let's jump on it before someone else does.
That is the hope, so.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to authorize the purchase from Bob Allen Ford and upfitting from nine-one-one custom of one Ford police hybrid SUV and authorize the mayor to sign the documents.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of purchase of K nine police vehicle, and Captain Khan, you still have the floor.
I promise it's not Groundhog Day, but it is a very similar proposal. Uh, in this circumstance, our K nine vehicle is five years old. Traditionally, five years is about the, uh, end of service life for a police vehicle. We run them long, we run them hard. They run twenty-four seven, the K nine vehicle especially because it's used a lot more than some of our other vehicles. Around this point, they're about a hundred thousand miles and seven thousand engine hours. A hundred thousand miles may not seem like a lot, but the engine hours is really what we focus on. Seven thousand engine hours is the equivalent of about three hundred thousand miles of driving. Um, and for us, a lot of that is stop, go, and idle, some of the hardest things on a car. Um, with the K nine vehicle, we have been spending money working on it because it's no longer under warranty. We're not getting warranty repairs and things are breaking. That's a vehicle that we like to keep running all the time because we need that air conditioning for the dog that's inside of it. Um, so with that, we, we've spent about twelve thousand dollars in the past year just keeping that vehicle on the road. It's time for it to be replaced. Along with the administrative vehicle, we have a second hybrid that Bob Allen was able to source for us, uh, that was bought on contract and was not picked up. Again, kind of fell into our laps. We had been in the process of ordering through Ford. That vehicle through Ford would not arrive until probably about October, and then we wouldn't be able to get it upfit until almost the end of the year. With this vehicle, we can, same as the other one, pick it up in about a week or so and start the upfitting almost immediately. Uh, and then nine eleven's willing to work with us, and, uh, since this is the same body style as the current car, we're not having to purchase a new cage for the K nine, a new hot pot for the K nine, we're able to reuse all of that equipment. This is gonna be the last year Ford has this body style, so that allows us to save a lot of money in those outfit costs. Probably about ten thousand dollars in outfit costs saved by reusing some of that equipment.
Nice. I was wondering if you were gonna try and switch the K nine portion to kind of what they talked about last meeting, where it's, uh, you can still transport somebody with the K nine back.
So for statutory reasons, we can't do that with this K nine because our narcotics and bike K nine, it's gonna sit there and aggressively bark and we run into state amendment issues with that.
I mean, it might have the desired effect.
Yeah, taking them to jail while that dog is snarling, barking at them, uh, they, they could make some claims on us, so we, we don't do that. The cage is just for the dog on that one. But, uh, the other dog that we talked about, yeah, we will do a split cage with that one.
All right. The current one we own, correct?
We, uh, it's actually one of our. We uh it's actually one of our first ones that we purchased outright.
Okay, so will we have any auction or resale?
Yes.
Cost on that?
That one will go to Purple Wave.
Okay.
So I have a question. So this one you're talking about, we would own instead of lease.
Yes, we would be buying this one outright.
Okay.
Oh, okay, you are.
So do you know what kind of warranty it has in terms, because it's a hybrid?
Uh it's a still a five year warranty. It's the same warranty on all of us, on all other police pursuit vehicles.
Do you get an extended warranty?
Uh that's that is the extended warranty. So they will not warranty police vehicles beyond five years because of what we what we do when we drive them, how long they're on the road.
Okay.
So that is the max. So you can't do the extended powertrain warranty on them.
Okay.
It's a full service warranty for five years and then at the end of that five years, the maintenance costs are on us. That's usually why we stick to that five year replacement cycle.
The reason why I'm asking is I got a hybrid, so it has that battery, that lithium battery in it, and those are very expensive. So I was just trying to kind of, I guess, prepare you if something goes on with that.
Yeah, and then that would be covered in that five year warranty.
Right.
Um and then at the end of that five years, we'll be back up here again asking for replacement for that car because we probably have over a hundred thousand miles on it.
Sure.
That's what I was gonna ask. What's the current value on the one we're gonna try and sell in Purple Wave?
Oh, if you ask me to estimate, I'd say if we auctioned it, we might get a couple of grand.
Okay, just a couple.
Yeah, it's it's uh older police cars don't fetch a whole lot on the market because people know how they've been driven.
Yeah.
What their service life is like. Uh they're also, once we take all the equipment out, they're filled with holes, uh gaps. There's no center console because it's literally a metal box that we reuse in the next car. Uh so it's a flat floor, um you know, chunks of of ceiling and holes in there missing, so they they don't usually go for it.
And how old is that one?
Uh it's.
Right at five?
Almost six years.
So I mean, if it's only gonna worth a couple of grand anyway, I think if we're got a warranty through five years, I'd be.
Oh, yeah, so we're gonna get it rid of it in five years.
If we're already kind of taking away all the value anyway, so yeah, I'm I'm fine with that. It made me think, I'm like, well shit, what's what's the what's a regular one worth and what's a hybrid one worth again, but. Okay, I think over the lifeline, you'll probably save that couple of grand.
Uh so with this one, because it's a different type of uh upfitting, the initial cost of purchase of the vehicle is very similar. It's forty seven thousand seventy five dollars. Uh with an outfit cost of thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty one dollars. Again, that's about ten thousand dollars in savings. Normally, we're between twenty three and twenty five upfitting a K nine vehicle because of the cost of the kennel. Reusing the kennel in the hot and pop system saves us about ten thousand dollars. That would bring our total project cost to about sixty two thousand dollars, sorry, sixty two thousand fifty six dollars and fifty cents. Um I also asked for a thousand dollar potential change order to be added to that, just in case we have any equipment fitment issues.
Okay.
So the sixty two includes the ex- extra thousand or?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I think, once again, well worth the money. Um like you say, we, you know, anytime you go buy one of the vehicles, you see it running, so it's gets gets its use and uh like like we always say, it stays pretty lean around here, so you know, you guys are constantly running everywhere, so yeah. Worth the money in my opinion. And once again, they're usually really hard to get, so getting one, being able to get it, you know, within a month to six weeks is absolutely.
I guess since we're going cash, is this one part of the budget or is this outside the budget?
Uh this one's outside, so Rhonda isn't here to answer any of those questions, but we have talked about uh equipment fund for that. Only because we wanted to snag it quickly and basically put that stamp on it to say, Bob Allen, please don't sell this to someone else.
And what's the reason for going outside of the leasing program?
So this one was actually, the the reason we wanted to lease the first one is because it was a lease expiring.
Okay.
Uh with Enterprise, we we replaced them with a like vehicle. It's still an SUV, so we were just continuing the lease on that. Um this one was a cash purchase and honestly, those decisions were made by finance.
Okay.
Uh they know more about the numbers than I do.
Well, no, and that's one thing that we, I think we talked about a little bit last meeting was some of these vehicles should probably go cash and some stay on the lease program. I would probably flip them personally, just because administrative vehicle I would think is being used a little bit less aggressively as a the K nine vehicle, but I'm fine with it either way. It's just, that would be my thought process on it.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Yeah, either way, it's already, we already approved the other one, so might as well pay cash for this one.
Yeah, I'm good with a mix of of both, with cash on some and lease on other ones. I don't like to go all either one.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to go a hundred percent lease. I think we need to start buying some.
Yeah.
Especially not for the police cars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, cool.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh move to authorize the purchase from Bob Allen Ford and upfitting from nine one one custom of one Ford police hybrid SUV. Approve the transfer of the money from the general fund to the equipment fund and authorize the mayor to sign the documents.
I second.
Got a motion, the second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That ends formal council action at this time. We'll move on to announcements and reports. Uh I don't really have a whole lot, just uh one of my favorite uh holidays of the year is coming up with July fourth, so uh obviously I'm pretty patriotic and so I enjoy that, enjoy blowing stuff up responsibly. Um but yeah, so enjoy enjoy July fourth. Uh fireworks will be on sale here soon. And uh so a lot of different options for that. And then um I want to just um give a congrats kind of to our US military with the recent things going on in Iran and stuff with the successful mission. Uh I've got a lot of lot of friends in the military and so it's a pretty pretty cool thing to um have a successful mission like that. So I know there's a lot of opinions on all that, but uh I just think it's cool to support our military and so, yeah. Mr. Young?
No, I think it looks like Amy went and talked to Bill a little bit. I think um I I think he made a good point. I think following up, I'd like to see a little bit more of us responding a little bit to some of these things, so. We have some, we've had some people come in. Obviously, last meeting I got a little bit worked up. Um and I know I'm gonna try and work with Adam and Chief a little bit on some of those things, but um no, I agree. I think we need to be a little bit better about responding to stuff. So Amy, thanks for jumping on that right away.
Yeah.
Trying to get some information from them.
And I do want to, I'll I'll tag on that and speak to that. It's not that we up here don't want to respond to you guys, because my personality, I I want to respond to everybody and try to fix your problem immediately. We do, even if we don't respond, we've been instructed and maybe that'll change, but in the past, when I come in, we were instructed not to respond to the public. We were legally told that that was the best option and that's what we should do fr- from a legal standpoint. Now, I do address every single concern with staff members, so that the issues are brought to the the staff members, so we're not just listening to you and then it goes over our head and we're done with it. Um but we could possibly talk about that and talk with the lawyer more and see if there's something we can do. Maybe maybe we can, but I just want to know, it wasn't just, it wasn't my decision to just say I'm not gonna respond to anybody. That's not, that's not our intention. I think all of us up here would probably like to respond. And sometimes I probably push those those a little bit and sometimes kind of respond or instruct one of the staff members to respond.
Yeah.
So my question though is, in reflection to that is, so we go ahead and follow up with the city staff, but then do we follow up with the citizen? Because to me, that's that's one of the biggest issues is when somebody has a concern and then there's no communication back.
Yeah, I would I would say sometimes that they do and probably sometimes they don't. So I would say there's probably definitely sometimes where the citizen is not contacted.
So I think it's something we can work on. I think it's something.
The biggest, the biggest concern there is core, when we're speaking and addressing someone directly and we're sitting all here in agreeance.
I'm just saying like even a phone.
What we say could potentially bind us. We have to be cautious about what we say when we're as a group or as on a one one conversation. We can be a little bit more candid and seek those informa- that information.
No, but I think there's always room for improvement, but.
Oh, absolutely.
I was happy to see Amy jump right up, so thanks for doing it. That's all I had.
Mr. Stone?
I have no report.
Mr. Field?
Uh I wanted to touch on the other aspect of fireworks, I guess, in that we we talked about it a lot more than we had in the past, kind of. I think we were a little more strategic in how we decided what days we're gonna be legal here um for for this season. I think we introduced one like four nights or something like that, so just want to encourage the citizens that do like their fireworks to understand what nights are okay and what nights are not. And I think sales start tomorrow.
I'll say there's quite a few days.
There's several days between when sales start and when they're okay in Spring Hill, so be respectful to the citizens who are not firework shooters. Um and those that have to sleep at night and understand those boundaries and please be respectful with that. Um and that can make everything work for everybody. Um you know, there's ample time for firework people to shoot their fireworks and and also be respectful of everyone else that doesn't do that.
Great. Miss Feedback?
Sure, I've got some questions. Um Jacob, sorry, not to call you out, but I need to ask you this.
Sorry.
So in reference to the mowing that that Bill was talking about, what, who's responsible for that? Is that something you follow up on or you do? So you told him that we would do that?
It's already been turned, let's, uh before we're meeting last time.
Okay.
If they don't mow.
Okay.
For those that couldn't hear it over the speaker, there's the letters were sent out and there's just a process that they legally have to follow once those letters go out before we can physically go out there and mow it for them.
And then we charge them, right?
Right.
Charged.
Yep.
Okay, and then the sewer?
Stormwater.
Stormwater?
Uh I believe it was stormwater. We'll have staff go out and check that tomorrow.
Okay, and then will you get back with them?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. Um and then there's nothing we can do about a swimming pool?
I believe that issue is going to be coming back to the planning commission at the next meeting.
Because they have to approve to remove it, right?
Correct. The the current.
Does the current plan have it in there?
Yeah, the current plan has it in there. I think there's a request to remove it. Um and that'll be discussed at the planning commission at the at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, um do you have an update on one hundred ninety first?
You you took my.
You stole his thunder.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
What? Yes, I do. I have two items. You know, just I'll give them to you right now. So the, we're still at about the same spot as we were the last time, one hundred ninety first. Staff's working with K dot on the final revision. Um Allison, do you have a a timeline? It's it's close. It's down to the last few hundred feet of having a lengthier turn lane. Is that what the last revision was?
Yeah, is this on?
Yep.
So on Tuesday, we had a uh final walkthrough. We have the preliminary design that we have developed. Uh we had that uh walkthrough with the consultants um just to kind of make sure that everything that we see on the ground is in the plans. We submitted um a revised, 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 I don't know. Five times revised. Okay, we've gone back and forth from a one lane configuration to a two lane configuration to back to a one lane configuration to a six hundred foot uh turn lane to a seven hundred foot turn lane. I think we're finally gonna be at the seven hundred foot single turn lane on one hundred ninety first street, so we're waiting on K dot to give our, give us the final blessing so that we can finalize those preliminary plans so that we can continue moving on with the signal design. So we are extremely close.
Once we have those, we'll submit those to you guys so you can.
I was gonna say, I thought, yeah, I thought you were gonna give us some sort of rough draft to look at.
It's roughly the same. They took out the southbound uh second turning lane that was going to the east. Uh and then extended it the single lane from, was it four hundred to seven hundred feet?
Just made it longer instead of.
Made it like that too.
So they can stage additional.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
But other than that, it's roughly roughly the same.
I can give you guys a current snapshot, but I would rather wait until we get those seven hundred foot plans finalized because I don't want to I don't want to give you something now that's I know is gonna change. But um yeah, as soon as we get that from the consultant, we can provide that to you. Um and then, like I said, once we get the geometry um done with the turn lanes and the roadway configuration, then they can come in and start working on the design for the signal and we'll get that getting.
Okay, I mean, just to hear that something's progressing, that's the main thing.
We're working on it.
I know you are. I'm just saying, I've made promises to people that I would continuously bring it up until it's done. And so that's what I'm doing. So um and then I just wanted to welcome the police chief. So I'm glad you're in our meetings and stuff and then I'm sorry for interrupting you. Okay, that's it.
Mr. Grant?
No report.
Mr. Massey?
Well, now I have one item. Uh just just so everyone knows, uh we do have an RFQ out for the city attorney services, so if anybody knows in a law firm or attorney would like to submit on that, please have them do so.
Mr. Lau?
You have a report? Including Mr. Lau.
Chief Sutterby?
I have no report. Thank you.
Mrs. Abel?
Okay, I have a couple of updates for you guys, just to um keep you in the loop on what's going on. Um so earlier today, I uh submitted the uh Safe Streets For All SS four A implementation grants. Uh you guys have previously approved our uh comprehensive safety action plan. Today was the deadline for the implementation grant, so this is gonna be for um the next couple of years. Uh we submitted on seven different projects. Uh we have roundabouts at one hundred ninety first and Ridgeview, two hundred and seventh and Ridgeview and uh Victory and two hundred and twenty third street. We have three uh limited access points along uh one sixty nine and then we have the South Street uh sidewalk. So those are all included in there altogether about eleven million dollars in projects. Uh so hopefully we'll be able to get um eighty percent of that paid for through our federal grants. We also submitted um some state grants through the Kansas Infrastructure Hub to get a large chunk of our local match paid for, so assuming we get everything all in, it's gonna be a hundred and ten thousand dollars for eleven million dollars worth of projects if we get all of that. Um we did receive thirty six letters of support. I broke the record. Twenty six, twenty five, twenty six was the past record, so I went above and beyond. I wanted to make sure everybody, everybody knew that.
Knowed.
The community supported this project, so I think having that volume in there will help help bolster our application as well.
So are all seven separate like um requests or is it one large request?
It's one large request, but the way that we set it up, it's actually six different projects.
Okay.
We put the two hundred and seventh street, I want to say, um limited access on one sixty nine. We paired that with uh the South Street sidewalk.
Okay.
Uh just because of benefit cost analysis, it made more sense for us to do it that way. Uh but yeah, each, we have six different bullet points for each of the six project areas. We're hopeful that they don't try to cut any of those out.
Well, that's what I was wondering, like if they come back and say, well, you asked for ten million, we'll give you five. Can we pick where that five goes or do we have to do all all of the projects still?
That is a really good question. I don't know the answer to that. I think if they give us some something less, then we would have the opportunity to.
To kind of pick and choose.
De-scope or reduce the scope of that project, whether it's, you know, taking out project areas or whatever, so let's not have that conversation because we're gonna get the whole uh kit and caboodle, but if we need to have that conversation, I'll bring that before you guys.
Did you get any more, or have you had a chance to talk to anybody about some of the stuff we talked about two hundred and twenty third as far as the west side of that?
That was next on my.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were done.
Okay, so wanted to give you guys an update on two hundred and twenty third street. We heard the feedback from the last meeting. Uh we met with um one of the bus, the major business owners along two hundred and twenty third street today. Um got some really good information from them on flows and business um uses and the things surrounding the area. Um so from that, um we'll be able to, I've I'm trying to get a meeting set up with K dot sometime in the beginning of July. So after the holiday weekend, we're trying to get something set up with them um to start that conversation. We're gonna show them all of the um all of the options that were created plus throwing in a couple of extra um design options just to see what they uh see what they will allow. Uh we were able to discuss with the property owner today um some really good options um to integrate that, the the ramps with Webster and uh Hamilton. So um we've heard the feedback. We're gonna have the conversations with K dot. Hopefully, um we can come up with a solution that will be mutually agreed upon by everyone. So our next step is to meet with K dot. Um then we're going to have our engineers maybe mock something up to, based on that conversation, uh if everything goes well. And then uh we plan to have some sort of public forum, so stay tuned for that. Um I think we're tentatively planning for the end of July, beginning of uh August, assuming everything goes well and we can get things moving um for that public forum, so um we heard you guys.
Yeah, it's great.
Got the feedback. We've got a plan. We're working on it.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your efforts, especially on grants are a big thing to me, so I appreciate all the efforts you you have done since coming here, chasing after all those grants, because I think you know, we all try to keep taxes as low as possible, but anytime we can do stuff like that and get free money and not put that burden on our on our citizens, I think is huge.
Yeah, I'm all about that. Then the last item I had, uh Lane mentioned, we've got an RFQ out for legal services. We also have, uh we submitted the RFQ for the new wastewater treatment facility that is out on the street. Um people have six weeks to respond to that. Um we are asking for a progressive design build. Um, we are asking for, uh, progressive design build teams to form and to submit proposals, um, so that we can review those. We have a mandatory pre-proposal meeting on July 9th, and proposals are due August 7th. So, um, anyway, anybody out there listening that has an interest in forming a team, go contact some contractors, go contact your engineers, and, uh, hopefully we can, um, see you guys submit something. That's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Deputy Madam Clerk? Mrs. Jones?
No report.
Mr. Spear?
So, uh, just wanted to update you. This year's 2025, uh, street maintenance project will, uh, kick off. Uh, we met with the contractor, looked at their schedule. It'll probably be, um, the latter part of July. But they think, uh, that they will be in and out in, I'm gonna say three, they said two, but I'm gonna say three, um, knowing how that tends to go. So that'll be a, uh, late July, early August, uh, project and we'll get those, get those streets resurfaced.
Sounds good. With that, that ends announcements and reports at this time, and we'll move on to executive session number one. I believe we need 10 minutes for that.
I move the city council recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B, one of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 7:54 PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following. Spencer Lau, City Attorney, Lane Massey, City Administrator, Mona Keisha Jones, HR Director.
Second. Got a motion of seconds. Is there any further discussion? Know all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 500. See you soon.
Usually it was 10 minutes.
The even ones are usually doable.
I know.
Amy Puckett Allen. That's what we got used to.
Welcome back, everyone. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened in open meeting at eight oh six P M. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subjects stated, and with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion of second. Is there any further discussion?